Good evening, everybody. A notice is hereby given that a public hearing be held on Monday, April 7, 2014, 16:00 AM, in the municipal building, 14 Davis Street, Patchogue, New York. By the Board of Trustees of the Village of Patchogue to review and approve the proposed budget for the development of Patchogue for fiscal year 2014-2015. A copy of the proposed budget is filed by the Office of Village Clerk. At such public hearing, any persons interested will be given the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you very much. This year's tax rate is going to go up by 2.86 percent. On the average household, it's about $4 a month, or forty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents per year. On the average, take the highs and lows, it's about $4 a month, some will be six, some will be three. So you know, we use $600,000 more surplus for tax relief. We're also, prior to the 5/31/14, which is the last day of fiscal year, we have three surgiari, which are actually tax fees against the village by commercial properties, and we're taking an additional $344,000 out of some of those surgiari. They are, actually, they're negotiating, I think they're negotiating down, while it's probably close to... Yeah, almost better than a half. So between those two, $600,000 is out of surplus for tax relief. There's also additional $344,000 coming out of surplus, a close one million dollars is coming out of surplus to keep our tax rate from falling, like I said, say 2.86 percent. There are a number of cost drivers, I'm going to ask Village Chair, Mr. Krosak, please go through those.
Okay. Basically, our tax rate is at 13.27 this year versus 12.90 last year. We have worked very hard to keep all the expenses that we can control under control. Well, we did. Tom Farrow's going to talk to you a little bit later about what we did in that respect, but we have certain expenses that we really can't control. Retirement expenses are up 6 percent. Workman's comp is up 24 percent. Health insurance is up 34 percent. We're talking about $190,000 in expenses that we have no control over. Other than that, we have been working very hard to keep the expenses down. We had some unfortunate items like minimum wage went from 7.25 to $8. You know, there's certain things that we have no control over. If we didn't have that $190,000, we'd be well below that 2.87. We'd be about 1 percent over our tax rate for most years. But unfortunately, you know, we put in some expenses, some code people that we needed to get in because of our parking meters, but the parking meters are going to cover those costs. So everything that we can control, we basically have. Other items, we just can't.
You know, one of the things you have to, when you take a look at this budget, when you take a look at any budget of any municipality, in 2003-4, we paid $57,000 in pension and retirement costs. This year, it's $725,000. So over the last 10 years, we've had to figure out how to manage those absorbed increases. You know, workman's compensation, as Mr. Krosak indicated, went up 24 percent, went up $86,000 this year. Health insurance only went up 3 percent, but it was $40,000. And this is the first year where we've actually began, we were able to get the last contract in middle on that, but beginning to get employee contributions into, for the health insurance, where it had never been done before. So they've got a whole series of cost drivers that, as Mr. Krosak indicated, we don't have any control over. It just, when you go from $57,000 to $725,000, you have to be able to figure out how to make those numbers work so we can continue to do things. One of the things that, when you read all these things about tax caps and all these other things that people have to do, they forget the single most important thing for any economic development or anything that will eventually stabilize taxes is infrastructure. That if you allow your infrastructure to deteriorate quickly, to a point, now instead of paving a road, you have to replace it. One of the problems that we had is over on, when we did Academy Street, Cleveland Street, those two streets themselves, had to be totally reconstructed, they would fail. So we have other streets in the village over the years that have failed. So you go from just paving them, reconstructing them. You go from a sixty-seven, sixty to seventy thousand dollar job, like Academy Street would have been, to 180, almost $200,000. So part of what we look to do is to continue to take care of our infrastructure. You go down by the parks now, you see the sidewalks being put in alongside the parks. Safety issues. Take a look at South Ocean Avenue, that's, we're not going to put you together on due to South Ocean Avenue, then of course, it's the better part of the quarter million dollars. If we don't do it now, then of course, it's much greater in the future. Trustee Fur, has spent a lot of time looking through the budget. And he looked at the same thing that Mr. Krosak did, except on the other side, on our expense side.
Thanks, Paul. I like numbers. I'm a numbers kind of person. So when I got the budget, I literally took it apart, line by line, and department by department. And I made a little spreadsheet to look and see what was happening, where were the increases coming from. And so I'm going to take a little bit of time. Legislative budget, that's us guys, okay? It's flat. It's $66,300. That's what you pay for the trustees. The court is, went up two and a half percent year over year, $250,000. The executive branch, the mayor's office, went down $2,300, minus 6 percent. The finance department, that's Ryan and Andy, those people, they went down $16,000. Notice the trend, down, down. The staffing, that's the village clerk, the village attorney, the engineering department, that went down $17,000. Shared services went down $6,000. Special items, that's like, you know, we paid $225,000 a year for liability insurance for the village. That line item went down $4,000, just a little less than a percent. Public safety went up, $106,000. We all know we got some more code personnel this year, so we've got a little increase in that department. Health is flat. Transportation is up a little bit. It's up $21,000. That includes $78,000 in the lease for the meters. Culture and Recreation, Billy's big spend through it, he went up $5,000.
That was my own wage.
Yeah, right. So minimum wage, that's .7 percent, okay? Home and Community, that's zoning, planning, refuse collection, et cetera. It's a big budget, it's $1.2 million. That went down 5 percent year over year. Debt Service, pretty flat, went down $15,000. So those are all things that we have control of. Those are all village departments where you can go in and say, well, can we save money? And if you add all that up, okay, all the things that we have control over, year over year, fiscal year 14-15 versus fiscal year 13-14, is $599 less, okay? So if that was all we'd have to worry about, we'd have a flat year over year. We have another line item. It's called employee benefits. It's $3 million, okay? It's 25 percent of our budget. And this is state mandated, you know, pension funds, workman's compensation, medical insurance. That went up, $185,000, 6.5 percent. The entire increase in our general fund budget is coming from outside the village, it's coming from the state. And I don't want to get too political, but when somebody crams down something on you that you don't have any choice about, and then tells you, with the other hand, that they don't want you to exceed your budget by 2 percent, you've got to ask what they're smoking, okay? It's just totally and completely unfair. The only way the village could really comply with this political mandate is by reducing our services, by cutting staff, by, we're probably going to have, you know, we're in a quandary anyway, because we get this new medical insurance thing, where somebody works more than 30 hours, they're adding medical insurance for years, a whole bunch of fuzzy regulatory stuff that's making our lives harder. But, you know, when I started, when I started taking this look, I was taking an advocacy position that we really should try to comply. And when I, you know, I had private talk with Paul, Paul pulled together the finance people, we all sat down and looked at it. It's not us, it's New York State Government that's increasing our taxes this year. That's it.
Tom, is the, or on, the workman's comp, is that a standard, or do we have more cases than...
We've had more cases. We've had people on, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
People on our refuse that have been hurt, you know, and it's, you know, the older people that, but it is what it is, you know, there's nothing you can do about it unless we revamp the whole system.
If we had, if we had more flexibility in our budget, we could, let's call, I hesitate to use it, but what, if you have flexibility, you rubber room those people, okay? You put them in a place where they can't get hurt. You make, give them a clerical job, and you replace them out on the line.
We don't have money to do it.
That's what New York City does, by the way, all the time. They get somebody who's causing the claims to go up, they put them in, schoolteachers, they do the same thing.
I know, I've been to New York.
Yeah, we just don't have the elbow room to implement that kind of stuff in the village.
You know, in union contracts, civil service law is such that those situations, you can't take care of easily. They have to go through a process, and whether it be age or physical condition, you can't discriminate, we don't. We follow the processes, there's three, there's yours are. But we do a tremendous amount of squeezing and squeezing for dollars, you know, you... And the one that gets me the craziest to this day is retirement piece of it, that it's all state driven, goes back to 2000, when the tacking and the call changed the tier four, contributory to not contributory. It used to be that if you were in tier four, they would pay 3 percent. 3 percent have solved the $725,000, probably solved it down to 4.50, probably saved us $20,000, $30,000, because of the fact that the control of, makes projections of 7 or 8 percent returns.
But that's, I mean, that's all interest rate, interest rate driven, I mean, interest rates are low.
Yeah.
You know, the stock market is doing well, you know, a lot of it is in, you know, certain investments that are very targeted interest rate. And when the interest rates are what they are now, you're retiring, and the retirement program is not going to be repairing us.
You know, the other thing is, we used to, when interest was better, Annie, we used to give her about $100,000 a year in interest back.
Easy.
We haven't seen that in six years.
Have enough to pay.
You would have got mortgage tax.
Mortgage tax, it used to be...
On mortgage tax, we used to collect over $300,000 a year.
What do we get now?
Maybe 100, 120, a month.
So when you look, if you go back, 2003, 2004, you take those two numbers by themselves, and you add that to the pension cost, and just take the workman's comp, there's been a million dollar shift in both income in and expense out, that has nothing at all to do with how we operate. And they're not even things that you can turn around and say, well, we're doing less of this, so therefore we can get rid of three guys. We're doing less of this in the office, so we can get rid of people. The problem is the demands of them, whether it's in the highway department, roads, signs, repairs, or in this office, under state mandates of things, reports that have to be done, things that have to be done that weren't done three, four, five, seven years ago. Building and housing, demanded over the years, more part times, I'd like to make them full times. The problem that you have, as soon as you hit that 30-hour mark, 20, they're not, actually it's 20 hours over a year, you begin to roll yourself into full-time employees, and you roll yourself into, unfortunately, because of the cost of health insurance, you can't beat people on full time, which is really the shame of all of them, because there are people out there who need insurance, need jobs, that we combined some of these part time services to full-time jobs, but all of a sudden, you take $60,000, $70,000 worth of part-time salaries, you make it 110,000, 115,000, you're working a full time. So there's a lot of things that we deal with. I know people are reading all about, you know, the governor's tax cap, and I'm not going to get my money, but I think you're going to want to set a target. CPI went up 4.7 percent last year, and that does fall to 2 percent. Everything else, you know, any other comments, or any other comments?
No, just, just an aside, you know, this increase of 2.86 percent is the lowest increase we've had in 10 years. So, I mean, even though there are certain things we can't control, we are controlling the other side, so we're trying to do the best we can for our tax rate, to keep our budget as low as possible. This is what we have to do.
You know, one of the things you hear, and there was a thing in the paper the other day about the school district in terms of, we carry 2.7, I think the surplus will be this year. We do it for a number of reasons. Number one, so we can begin to put money, so we can do exactly what we did this year, is put a close one million dollar cap in, reduce taxes. The other thing is, how we got through the storms, the 15 snowstorms, is how we got through Hurricane Sandy without having to borrow money, and therefore, you know, I'm mayor of a couple of other villages, and I started executive work for Suffolk County, village officials, bonded with twos and threes and four million dollars, because they didn't have the money to be able to cover the expenses of taking care of the snowstorms, taking care of Hurricane Sandy. We carry, the third most important thing, part of the whole issue of the surplus, is what keeps our bond rating at its end. We're going to bond this year for, to use the roadwork and do a number of other things. What commit, probably around where, interest rate?
I should have had an answer.
Probably around 3 percent, you know, depending on how long we go out, you know.
But you're not going to get that if you don't have the surpluses, because banks no longer can count on the fact that municipalities will increase taxes to cover those. They have to bank on the fact that they have reserves to support it. And with unbound, and I think that we get elected to manage dollars, is that we manage it in a manner that does increase costs, but keeps us fiscally sound. You'll never really agree with the governor on this one. Many of your options, I suspect, are likely to be economic development is driven by investment infrastructure, it's not driven, it's not driven by investment. Comments by the public?
Good evening, everybody. John Bojek, A. Madison Street. I've got questions, and I hope they don't take a long time, starting with, I don't see any money in the budget for you, Mr. Egan.
Really?
It's in the attorney's account, but Mr. Egan is not paid by salary. We hired him on a retainer, so it's in that .415 category, non-employees fees for services. So it's on a separate line? Correct. Okay, glad to find that. Thank you for donating.
So you're not donating?
Oh, we're not. This budget is actually two, sorry, we were talking about the city district as well, which does also show an increase as well, which is what percent actually?
It is 7.3.
7.3 percent, okay. And just a flip back to second, so the 2.86, is it actually within the cap, because I know there's some wiggle room?
No, they've taken away any adjustments that we can make. We used to, because look, last year, the adjustment was under.
Now, two years ago.
Two years.
Last year, we were over, this year, we're over.
Would you just...
Okay, so let's say, I...
You don't know, just say a lie.
I know that it's not a perfect 2 percent, I know there's some room for a different thing. Yeah, you know, I've listened to what you said, Mayor, and I'm going to think about what you've had to say. I'm just going to ask just a couple of questions. And actually, this all refrains, because I've talked about some of these things before. I see that $2,000 for trees has gone from the budget, is that true? Yes?
I have $2,000 I haven't spent from last year. It'll be spent this spring.
It will be, all right, but otherwise, it's gone. You know, there was, I campaigned for this before, we have riverfront clubs and other clubs that have noise licenses, they pay very, they pay very little for them, they haven't been raised, from all the years that I've asked for that to be done. I think it would be worthwhile to think again about what we are asking million dollar clubs to pay, a couple hundred dollars, it seems to be kind of low.
There's been discussion on that, and I would say it was close.
Okay, yeah, right. Well, that would be my suggestion. Also, too, I'm not the only person who's spoken about this, but that cap that's now changed, doesn't it also require the village to actually reduce its budget by 1 percent?
Next year, that's what this year does. Is that next year, you've got to reduce the cost that we've already reduced.
Right, right. All right, so we're on with that, and actually with your comments, Trustee Fur. And I find that, you know, I'm a little hard to say this, because I used to be a civil servant myself, but maybe there is going to have to be some cuts, and I don't know how they're going to be managed, but the garbage service, we've asked about contracting out or creating some relationship with Rock Haven Town, I don't know what the figures are on that, you know?
We've done, two years ago, a year ago, we said...
Who budgeted the garbage?
We said, and did an extensive study, we brought in numbers, and the numbers didn't justify...
We do, yeah.
We'll take another look at it, but they were too close, they have to always...
Okay.
You know, I think that what you lose on that, you've got to make the decision as to whether you want jerky cans out, you know, to curb, that's what people have to make that decision, they've got to make certain decisions on whether they want the garage open every other weekend, I mean, there's certain things that will be lost.
Right.
Specific benefits that we lose by doing that, you know, besides the fact, you lay off possibly not many, you know, but there's those kinds of things to look at. I'm a believer in the services stuff. I believe that it's what makes villages unique from the town.
I appreciate that, but I guess there's a new reality arising, which is that 1 percent demand is going to actually require some decision, because people are going to get 2 percent checks, you know, there is an aspect to this stuff.
So you would be about $4 bucks?
True, and I'll get something in the school district, too, but I think what's pushed is, maybe there's a part of the village that's not pushed to do that.
I understand. That's why you see a city where we're sitting, in the sense of what Tom's talking about, that we did, we may should be decreasing, the only increases were areas, and in fact, if we didn't do the increase, you know, the public safety areas are levels where we thought that we'd really get back to the median, but we've done what we can do.
All right. I wish there were more people, all the best of other people speak after me, and help others with the gate, and the ideas, that could also be helpful, too, small ones all add up as well.
Oh, yeah.
And the last, I guess, is, if revenue is going to be an issue, then I'm hoping that the parking meters work, because maybe that will generate some need of revenue, avoid some hard decisions, because...
Well, that's, you know, the numbers that we put in for the revenue on was very, very conservative. And we were conservative in that we did not want to say, we're going to get this, and you don't get it. We wanted conservative money. You know, the other numbers that didn't really come up, and because they're basically flat right now, is that we put in some additional money for ticket revenue, for parking, but all that did was when Suffolk County opened up their courts, they started, V and T, all vehicle and traffic came here to the village. But now, there are portions being written to the county, and they go to hot park. So we probably lost $60,000, $70,000 from the county, I think is about the way the numbers are. So that revenue source has hurt us, even though we're not going to be gained by parking tickets right now, or we're doing right now is replacing what we lost.
And this is my final point, it's sort of related to what you're saying, we don't get any aspect of the sales tax, that's right, it doesn't get a fraction of a penny.
Correct.
And there's no sense, there's no hope for seeing that's changed in the future? Because all this cash register is ringing, it's Suffolk County and Governor Cuomo, who's enjoying that sound.
Well, they're enjoying the sound here in the village that they hadn't heard for years and years, of, you know, every, almost every storefront that's full, that wasn't full before, every storefront, cash register's a ring until 1, 2 in the morning, but, and I'd love to get a piece of that.
Because in that sense, I do agree. It is unfair in the sense that the village gets not a single fraction of the penny of any of the sales government has.
Yep.
John, to your point, the general fund is $11.9 million, okay, that's the top line. 6.9 million of it is real estate tax, and about 4.4 million of it is other fees, you know, it's parking meters, it's building and housing, it's garbage collection, okay? And one of the sort of principles that we're trying to operate on is, if you use it, you pay for it. So if you want to park, you're going to pay, okay? If you want garbage, you're going to pay. I hesitate to say it, if you use an ambulance, you're going to pay. So we're looking at every, every single thing, whether it's a service that is used by an individual, if you have a noise permit, you're going to pay, and maybe, maybe people aren't paying enough. So we're looking at that, I mean, it's four and a half million dollars, we can increase that, okay, if we could put another million bucks into that, those revenues, that's not the taxpayer paying.
I agree, and actually, before I leave you, that ambulance fee, I forgot about that, that's insurance.
You have a million dollars...
You have a million bucks we pay for free rides.
And no one pays, I mean, and so...
Just go through your insurance company, and pay a piece. So are you going to advocate that we find some way to collect some of that?
Well, we're looking into that, right?
Yeah, we're also, because everything now is revenue, see, the county is, the state doing it, it's, where are you going to pick up the revenue to be able to support the services you provide? The ambulance company is a hundred million dollars, that's right.
$630,000.
We write them a check. So I can take my wife to the hospital, and she has a note.
Right, so I think, so the concept of the insurance company should, would pay for that transaction, get a part of it, at least some of it, if they were actually billed.
Yeah, wouldn't that, and the companies always thought that, because we would have to get the camera put in order, and if you don't go to a three ambulance company, there's a counter.
I think they owe us for Old Town Hall, you have to collect something from them. Thank you, Governor.
Everybody else.
The Attorney, Mr. Mayor, and board members, Chief Lieutenant, Richard Kemp, Jennings Mr. Mayor, I am not very comfortable being here this evening. I am very disappointed in this entire administration. From what I see, no one listens to the governor of the state of New York. Everyone in this administration has the attitude of, just pass it on, let the taxpayer pay for it, and no one, no one has the responsibility as a trustee or anything to look at a better solution for everyone, everyone involved. By passing this resolution this evening... By passing this resolution this evening and bringing the two percent tax cap, you will put every taxpayer in the village of Patchogue, you will be denying us a tax reduction from the state of New York. I have listened to the New York State Assembly this morning, where this matter was discussed and debated for at least forty-five minutes. The governor has preached that New York State is the highest taxed state in the country, the country. And the governor has made it very clear that the time has come where shared services have to be considered to keep people from moving away from New York State. New York State has become a state where people wanna leave by the, by the... Leave faster than people come in. There is, as far as jobs and manufacturing, the village of Patchogue has, everything has dissipated away from Patchogue. There was a time, and I can speak personally, because I know of this, there was a time when Patchogue had at least three manufacturing, dress manufacturing shops. There was a time when Patchogue had a shop on West Avenue called Wire Made, where they actually made metal welded wire display racks. They were painted, they were chrome plated, they were shipped out. There was a time in Bedford, at Island Colne Lumber, where they made pre hung doors and windows, and I know, because I worked there for over a year. All of this manufacturing has gone, all of these jobs are gone away from New York State, because New York State is the highest taxed nation. And for your information, Entman's Bakery of Bayshore of Brentwood has left long now. By passing this resolution, you will be passing on tax increases to every resident of the village of Patchogue. And I think that you should take some drastic measures to cut taxes. I have spoken with our village treasurer, either last year or the year before, at the board's recommendation, at your recommendation, to have a private meeting, which I did.
Yes, you did.
I did, and the words of our treasurer were that when all the apartments start opening up, the tax rolls will start turning around. And by what you're proposing tonight, I'm not seeing it. So I see a lot of ways, I see a highway department that, the... You know, when you take sanitation and pickup, when you consider the cost of the vehicles, the base price of the garbage truck alone, a hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, is a ballpark idea, each truck, then you consider maintenance, and the maintenance personnel in the shop on Waverly Avenue. And you consider, you have to have a foreman, and then you have all the workers, and you, being active in the mayor's society, I'd like to ask you, of all the villages that you're familiar with, what percentage contracts out sanitation? Do you have a ballpark idea?
Well, there's still those things, no? The best of these two, well, the contracts out, the contract out, which ever does it wrong?
They have the garbage district, which ever's...
Right, Delphite does it wrong, Javelin does it wrong, Emoryville does it wrong. And I think Lake Grove may contract out.
Freeport?
They contract out.
Right.
Most of us do what we do.
Town of Isla, contracts out.
No, no.
Town of Rockhaven, contracts out.
I'm talking about villages, 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 we can talk about the town and talk about villages.
I'm talking reality.
But didn't you say that we looked at it recently, within two, two years?
Yeah.
We looked at it, the numbers didn't make...
The numbers didn't work.
Yeah. When, what year was that on?
Twenty eleven.
Well, if it's, if it's a difference of dragging the cans out front versus having your crews drapesing over everybody's property, and walking through the flower beds, and stuff like that, you know? And if you've ever seen any of these crews who, when it's contracted out, they're not gonna be bothered counting how many cans are out in front, they're not gonna be bothered counting where it is, or if the lid's on, or the lid's off, they just take it. Because their workers are not paid by the hour, they're paid to get the job done, and that's it. So they don't, they don't take their time like Patchogue Village personnel do. So I, I think there's a serious issue why you don't wanna consider, and I question that difference.
I know, yeah, I can just question right now. Thank you.
Well...
Mr. Kemp, it's two million dollars, okay? It's been two million dollars for four years, it ran flat. And we'll look into it again, but how much money do you think we could conceivably save if we went private? If we got it contracted? You think we could save forty grand, fifty grand, a hundred grand?
No, you, as a trustee, sir, you are the one who should have investigated that long before.
We did it two years ago, and we'll do it again.
We'll do it again.
Well, wait, I'm not finishing.
Well, you start finishing, because we're into ten minutes now, and we're not doing much longer, but you can finish.
All right, all right, all right, so that, that matter is... I'd like to ask why, how much money has been invested in Free Eighty Bay Avenue? Does anybody have a ballpark idea?
About close to a million dollars.
A million dollars, and what does it amount to?
It's under Recreation Seven, it attaches to our parks, takes care of senior citizens.
And what do senior citizens...
Preserve the historic building, okay?
Okay.
Open as a senior residence center.
Can I interrupt?
Place for a garbage club to have a meeting once in a while, community facility.
You have to make decisions, Mr. Kemp, as to whether we provide services, whether we provide programs, or whether we take care of our buildings, or whether we take care of the community, those are decisions we make. We have an election every two years for trustees, mayors, it's a four-year term. Those decisions are being made by this board as it sits here now. And I understand your concerns, and I understand the issues with the budget, we wrestle with them, and we fight with them, trying to figure out how to make it work. But how to make it work in a community that you grew up in and I grew up in, to keep it as... You talked about businesses, you didn't talk about Paris Hard Works, which has about sixty employees that came in here about three years ago, Old Land River Avenue. You didn't talk about the new boat building company down on the Patrick River that has about ninety, ten new employees. You didn't talk about these things, you don't know about them, you don't research enough, you'll find out that, yes, some of these, we, Wire Made, we got about how many years now?
Twenty-five years.
Other things we place them. What used to be the rotate factory that was vacant for years, is where Paris Hard Works, something that I haven't got.
My point is...
My point is, is that we do the things we can do to replace those companies that we've replaced. Manufacture them on the Patrick River, you know, the Marines have all of them, and being much more, you know, for the rest of it now. The yacht manufacturer there, building three boats now to be taken, that they will sail to Australia. One of the largest boat manufacturers, yacht manufacturers in this area, on Long Island and in the New York, New Jersey area. That's what they do, they build yachts, they build boats.
Is that the Weeks, Weak Yard, or...
No, it's not Weeks, it's over, it's over Baldwin's property. You know, Blue Point Beer, whether you drink beer, you like the beer, you don't like the beer, just purchased by your Hudson Bush. I met with a Hudson Bush people the other day about expansion, which will include additional employees. Like they wanna bring, right now, all they do are their specialty beers by barrel. They wanna bring back Camel for their specialty beers, and expand that project, and add employees. So we do the things we can do to bring the employees that we need, that we can back in. But I think what you don't count, is when you say that, yeah, we've gone, you know? The eighteen hundreds, Patrick River was, that you had Bailey's, Bailey Mill, where the bowling alley is. Yeah, you built boat building, fishing, a thousand hotel rooms, hotel rooms went away. We ended up with Penny's, Beehive, Squeeze's, McWellens, Wilworth's, WT Grands, that's what we were. And you remember that, like I remember that, in the thirties, forties, fifties, sixties, seventies, into the eighties. Then the place went dark. And once, the only thing you had left in the Squeeze's, and the Squeeze's left, that town went dark. That's not dark anymore. All of those places are filled with different kinds of businesses and different kinds of employees. You know, Mr. Project, what a very good point, for the sales tax, tax issue. The fact that we, here in the village, produce so much fun, so many dollars go back to the county, without a nickel coming back to us. If you wanna complain about something, that's what you're complaining about, is the amount of money that goes outside, that leaves the village, that doesn't stay here, that's where the complaint is, that's where we get hurt. We don't have the ability to collect a dime for the revenue we produce. If the old River Water, the Old Clay Rose Brothers, they should put probably another thirty, hopefully another thirty homes on the tax roll by January first. Anything that came in after this January first is not on the tax rolls now. I think he had about fifteen, twenty, or more of them, if he opens another thirty, we get fifty, sixty. It's about twelve hundred dollars a piece in village taxes, it is between sixty and eighty thousand dollars, depending upon how many he can open. So that's revenue that you talk about. We do the things we can do with the revenue we can get. And your points are well taken, and I understand where you're coming from, the frustration, is where we sit here, is how we do that.
Is there any shared services?
Yes, we did, in fact, the most interesting one we did this year that probably saved us about a hundred grand was the agreement we had with the county. Waverly Avenue, Orson to Main Street, the spur behind Broadwood College, that's all county property.
County roads.
County roads. What we did with them is we said, and Suffolk County PD, and District Court, we signed an agreement with them in September, that we would maintain the properties, mow the grass, take care of those things, and plow Waverly and the spur, and portions of one twelve, plus the parking lots for the courts to take care of, and sidewalks for the courts, and for the fifth precinct.
And the emporium.
No, that's not, that...
No, the emporium has a...
An agreement with the county, whatever they...
Right, with the court house property.
Whatever that is, whatever that is, it's a...
So you maintain that property?
And what we get...
For the enjoyment of the emporium.
No, no, for the use by the courts.
And the emporium.
Please, Mr. Kemp, I didn't interrupt you in this, though, please, I'm directly what I do. The agreement that we have is that we will take care of those facilities, the parking, the sidewalks, and everything else. Take, maintain the roads, plow, I mean, we come out of, the only difference now on Waverly Avenue is instead of driving down, we're up, we're plowing down. And what we got was about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of salt. Our agreement is we will provide the services, they give us the salt. That salt, of course, is a hundred, that's what you have, budget numbers took a thousand dollars for snow this year. We saved a hundred thousand dollars on that agreement. That's just one of the agreements, we have an agreement with the town that we just, sorry, that we're gonna be taking care of all of their storm drains along Swan Creek and Dells Creek, and anything outside the town between Dells and Swan, we'll take care of their storm drains, and we'll put them, what are called backhoe filters. They will, the cartridges, each cartridge, and I think they got about two hundred that we have to take care of, cartridges cost about a hundred dollars a piece. We have, I think it's almost seven hundred drains here, storm drains. They will supply us with cartridges. We have the truck that we got with the grant with Delphite, the backhoe truck. And we will get all of our backhoe filters and cartridges, cleaning cartridges from the town. We save us probably about forty, about fifty thousand dollars a year. We have an agreement that goes back to when I was a trustee in nineteen ninety-two with the school district, for use of their plumbers and their electricians, when we have, have issue with plowing, or we do solving of their lots. We've been doing this for years, we've, we've been doing this before, Cuomo full of his idea. We always have shared agreements with our local municipalities, we have agreements with Delphite on doing, doing all of their storm drains, they take care of some of our lighting. These are all agreements that we've had in place for years. You know, ones that I started, ones that Keating probably had a hand in, but we've had agreements, shared services. What bothers me is that the governor's saying that this agreement with the county that we just signed, we can't use next year. He's saying we can't use the agreement that we have with the town. We probably have about a quarter million to three hundred thousand dollars worth of agreements with various entities, with the district, town, county, and our neighbor, Delphite Village. Was that, they're from the MTA, we, you know, with the party, like the MTA line. We, 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 we miss, like I said, the governor's really smart with what he said. Because any, any municipality worth its salt is talking to other municipalities, it happens over years. This agreement we have with the county, is a hundred, easily a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on this one to a lot. So, yeah, we've got it, and we'll continue to do it, and we'll continue to look for those synergies between other municipalities and other, you know, parties that we can get, take care of stuff. Anybody else?
As I said, there's still a lot of ways to actually...
Any other problems, Mr. Cap?
Yes, sir.
Can I finish? You are, you are. May I finish?
You are.
You've got fifty minutes, so you're a bit...
No, go ahead, you go.
My name is Ed Reitzel, and I'm a landlord at Smith Street on Lakeshore Drive, and I was questioning the garbage bill.
Yeah.
A one-family is six hundred dollars, and I have a four-family that charged me thirty-five hundred dollars. And where do these numbers come from?
They're the budget numbers to do the, to do the work that we do.
Well, they're picking up the same garbage, it's four, you know, I have a rental permit on both of them, the one-family I'm allowed five people, and the four-family building I'm allowed five people. So the same amount of people live in each building, but yet, the cost is more than five times the amount.
Why don't we do this, why don't you just took a meeting with Mr. Project, myself, and we'll stand with you.
Okay. Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Josephine Mill, which is on West Avenue. We're talking about this budget. We said the same things last year and the year before, and we're going to be saying the same things. I fully understand that there are costs that we can't control. And we are expecting some revenue from parking, and we're expecting some revenue from the condos. But let's be honest, we'll get some money in, but those costs that we can't control will just keep going up. I guess I'm looking at the overall picture. I'm not challenging anybody. What is the future of the village? Because really, what we're saying is that your backs are against the wall. And every year, you're pushed further and further, it seems to me. So what happens? You know, Tom, you talk about increasing fees, I think I heard you correctly, for the ambulance licenses, et cetera. Those fees are passed on to people who, like the village, have their backs against the wall. There's only so much you can afford. My point is that people are being driven out. I'm not blaming anybody. But people are being driven out and house prices in the village. And it's not just the taxes. You know, there are perceptions about the village, rightfully or wrongfully, that I think people are prices low. You know, it's nice to have services. It makes the village unique. I'd like to have a unique wardrobe, but I can't afford it. At some point, people would say, we can't afford to limit the village as much as we would like to. So I guess I'm thinking, you know, what's going to happen? What does the future hold? I'm not expecting anybody to give me an answer, but...
I think that really is the key discussion, and I think it comes to what Mr. Kent talks about in terms of revenues. It comes to whether we talk about the parks and the things that we do in the parks. It comes down to, do we carry a surplus or do we gamble from year to year? That we're not going to get beat up, or do we gamble that we're not going to have to bond and we're not going to end up in four or five percent? Those are the, they're really tough decisions you come to, is that how much do you give and how much do you give back? How do you make the work?
You know, two point, two point eight seven is a modest increase. Nobody could deny that. I guess what I'm saying is, how much longer will you be able to keep it at a modest increase? It seems to me that it just spirals out of control. And the people that are leaving are older people, retired people. That's a brain drain. It's not just young people who have brains. Old people have brains, they have judgment, they have experience. And I'm on the real estate sites all the time. I am amazed at how much is for sale in Patchard, for how little, and how long the houses stay on the market.
So, you know, I agree with you. It really is, you don't know how much we wrestle with this thing. It just, you go round and round, you go page by page, and it just, and then you get, then you get the built mistake.
I don't have an answer. I don't expect you to have an answer. I'm making a point. I don't know if there'll be a village if things continue.
Well, I tell you, the governor had his really good reason.
Well, you know, the governor had some suggestions, and I think they were good suggestions. I understand that they couldn't be implemented, exactly the way...
If he would do some things with, you know, money concentration, which really doesn't affect us that much, but affects your county taxes, which affects us, same thing with the school district. If he would have done something with the tail or Wickslaw, which requires us when we go out to bids, that we can't bid for best price, you gotta bid for best process, certainly, certainly. There are things that he had opportunities to do that he didn't do, that I don't really, that he should take any opportunity. Because those are the, those are the cost drivers. They're the cost drivers on a lot of things. You know, we had no, no increase in salaries last year, and a two percent in salaries this year, plus we're starting to take out a modest amount for health insurance. So basically, our employees have gotten nothing for the last year. And those numbers then go up over the...
Do you see them going up, or do you see them stabilized?
What the...
I'm sorry?
What stabilized, the salaries?
Yeah, pension costs, healthcare costs, healthcare costs are not going down.
No, they're not. And that's, believe it or not, I have less of a problem with healthcare because it's a direct service to people that you get. I have a problem with pension because those numbers are controlled by how the state manages their investments. You know, as we keep talking about the governor, I mean, he came out and said, I fixed the pension system because he has tier seven now, or six, whoever knows. But another way he could have fixed it, and it was something I had listened on, the executive board, with the New York Council of Representatives, was in a meeting that was his staff. And I asked him directly, if you changed tier four legislatively in two thousand, that you took away the three percent contribution. Can't you legislatively put it back in place? Now, the New York State Constitution is very clear that you can't take and change a person's benefits. So their answer was, well, it's a benefit you can't change. Well, it's a benefit that we get it, not when you're paying for it, the prior. And they said, well, our attorneys, they'll say, why don't we, why don't you have a judgment decision? Let a judge determine. Absolutely not. Because in my mind, on the level of government that you're dealing with, you're dealing with probably a million and a half public employees that would be affected by it. And my point was, very simply, you don't need to put three percent back in one shot. Put one percent a year over three years. But can the cash flow back? The retirement system is not driven by stock, but driven by what people should be doing as a contributor to what they can. Three percent is what people spend. Mrs. Siegel, you just got here. We're just finishing.
I'll go home now, but not without a complaint first.
Really, do you have a comment about budget that we discussed that you want here to hear?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, Paul.
No, you said that to me also, about sixty years ago.
Oh, yes. I taught you how to do the flag salute.
You also told me how to take a nap.
And I got you your first library card.
You got your first library card.
We go back a little bit, like three weeks.
Yeah, right. But actually, we are seven years old.
Okay, whenever you're ready, I'm ready.
Would you have a comment on anything you want to say?
Go ahead.
Okay. You're gonna love this one. Paul, watch out, I'm always careful.
Getting ready to do battle.
When I finish, you will all appreciate my husband's comment, which was, "My wife is outspoken, but not by many."
Are we speaking about parking, Mr. Dill?
This goes back in history. American Revolution, taxation without representation, could be a pirate's hat. Are you here to put your hand in my pocket and take the sword? What I am referring to is a proposal that was mentioned to me that there will be meters in free parking areas in Patchard. I am violently opposed. Fifty-eight years ago, I walked up street, saw George Light Trevor, it was a truck full of meters. And I said, George, what are you doing? He said, we're gonna put the meters in. I said, well, you're gonna have a hell of a scrap for me. Turned around and said, take the meters away, and they never came back. What is going on now?
I'm gonna ask my trustee deputy. As Secretary General would do, he would pass it on to his second commander. Thank you for coming.
Oh, maybe not.
Always. I just happened to have some notes. I was prepared.
I'm a little hard of hearing. I'm about two months older than when I had my kindergarten, so go ahead.
You are a village resident? Correct. So you will be able to park for free in the parking lots. Is it, can we, can you hear me on the radio?
Can everybody hear?
Yeah. Yeah, you will be able to park for free.
Yes, all village residents park for free in the parking lots.
You have a sticker.
When you get your village sticker, you'll be able to park for free on, in the meter lots. On Main Street, all residents have to pay on Main Street. And I've been discussing this with many people from the Chamber and Dennis, of course, and store owners. And it seems the meters are working on Main Street, and there are spaces for people to park as designed. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Now, my question is, are the free lots going to be metered?
Yes, the lots are gonna be metered, but village residents with a sticker can pay for free.
My concern is not only for village residents.
Some of the, some of the spaces will be free until the night time. There's different ways you can park. The meter's gonna run in some of the areas of lots from six, from ten in the morning till six in the afternoon and evening. And then at night is also gonna be changed, so then some of the spaces will be metered late at night to do that.
I have several questions about this. Number one, was this ever put out for public hearing?
Yes, I mean, we had public meetings...
Was, when?
Oh, for the last two years. We must have talked about this.
Specifically, a meeting to discuss the park?
Yes.
How did I miss that one?
It was in advance for the last two years.
Had you thought of giving a referendum to let the people vote on whether they want to now? The problem is not just the village residents, Jack. I'm president of Friends of the Library. I'm speaking here only as a private citizen, nothing to do with that. However, I can say right now, as a five-generation family in Patchard, that there is nothing in this village that I can't get anywhere else except the library and the art space. This brings in people from other areas. Now, in my volunteer group, the people who work with me and the Friends of the Library don't live in Patchard. Some of them come from Edinburgh. And I think it is unreasonable to expect people who are giving their time and their talent to the community and raising as much as six to eight thousand dollars that we donate, to have to pay to come to do this.
But there'll be enough free parking back there. Not all the spaces are gonna be metered.
How many, give me numbers.
I think about forty percent of the spaces in the village are gonna be metered. That's including the street. So about sixty-five percent, at least about a little more than sixty percent are still free. Now, even behind the library, the ones that are closest to the library are metered, but the ones that are a little further away are gonna, is gonna be free.
Are you going to keep the yellow lines?
I'm not sure what color they're gonna be.
No, there's a difference.
Well, we're, we're, we're working on that, as far as which ones are gonna be white, which ones are gonna be yellow.
You know, this is the same answer I got when Tri-Tech had their first meeting. And I went, nobody questioned them but me. I said, what are you going to do about parking? And they all just spunked me off and said, we'll discuss that later. Huh?
Oh, no, no, we're not discussing it later.
They did not give any answer at the initial meeting when Tri-Tech came to town to talk about their parking, because they have all these apartments. So you're saying that why is it necessary to have meters there at all?
Because obviously, we need more parking in the village. Because of the success of the restaurants, basically, where we have fifteen-plus restaurants within a two-block area that many of those buildings, and you know, you've been here, were at one time retail space. Now, retail space, you might have four employees, except for Sweets', and most of the stores have, you know, four to ten employees there every day, maybe, and customers in and out. Now we have restaurants that in the evening could have thirty employees and a hundred and twenty or two hundred customers. Now, this takes more parking that we don't have. So we need to buy properties or to build a parking tier park, let me just finish. And the majority of people coming into the village are from out of town. They're not paying the taxes in the village, but they're using our services. We need more code enforcement because more people are coming into the village. We need more parking because more people are coming to the village. And it's either put parking meters in or have the village residents pay for that additional parking, which could mean about maybe a ten million dollar project over the next few years to buy properties and to build more parking. Now, the alternative to parking meters would be to tax the residents of the village to create more parking that benefits the retailers and the restaurants to bring in people from out of town to park. Now, we can do that, but we felt that it was a better solution was to charge for parking and charge for the services. Because parking isn't, free parking isn't really free. It's gotta be plowed, it's gotta be lit, it's gotta be maintained. It's, we're gonna be resealing all the parking lots. Somebody's gotta pay for that. Now, either the village residents are gonna pay for it, or all the out-of-town people who are coming in, or the out-of-town people are gonna pay for it for the village residents. Personally, I think that I'd rather have the people from out of town pay for it who are using our services than the residents.
But you tell me now, there will be still sixty-five percent free for people who come? Because we run programs, you know, I'm speaking as an individual and as a volunteer. You have to understand that. We do run programs at the library, and people come from all over for them. And I hate to have them penalized. And a lot of the people, you know, are not village residents, they're East Patchard, or Memphis, or wherever. Plus, the people we employ there for being the entertainers, or being the lecturers, or someone. So that's why I have great concern that they have accessibility without being penalized financially to come and give us their services.
Now, for instance, the entire parking lot behind the Congregational Church will be free twenty-four hours. That's not metered. That will be all free. The parking area behind the Capital One Bank, that's all free. That's gonna be all free all the time. Parking behind the library, the first row behind the library that goes from the music store to where about the library, the first area which is closest is gonna be metered during the day. The ones behind there, so closer to Terry Street, are gonna be free all day. And then later in the evening, they become paid spots.
So you're telling me then, when my volunteers come, I should tell them to park behind the Congregational Church?
No, behind, at your capital one.
Or closer to Terry Street.
Yeah, or closer to Terry Street.
I recommend you for doing Taylor Street and also what you did along Division Year, where at least you made more parking spaces.
They'll always be free, those spaces.
Okay. Now, I read on January sixteenth that you had a big study, you know, it was gonna be three hundred and five parking spaces and the whole big green thing. What happened?
Oh, we're working on that. Right now, the cost of it there is about six point two million dollars.
Well, have you gotten any federal grants or any other private grants? And have you looked into bond issues and so on?
Yes, and the other thing we looked into is what's called the RBC, which are the grants given out by the state for these. And those are applications, those you really have to...
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, you know, we are by part of the state of...
We've been pretty good with getting grant money. I guess we've gotten over the last ten years, about fifty million dollars.
Well, the reason I came is because I had a few volunteers who were really upset because they came from Edinburgh, and they said, you know, this is, this doesn't feel right to us.
One of the things I just, I do want to mention is that this is a fluid system. We're putting in place a plan, and we're gonna watch this plan over a period of time and adjust it as needed. So if we find that, well, you know, during the daytime, there's just not enough free parking or whatever, we'll adjust it, we'll pull back, we'll find others places to park. But as the mayor was saying, you know, for instance, the Church Street Lot, that's where we have targeted for tier parking structure. We have to buy those properties.
Plus, we will have the Younger Hill Carnegie Library there.
That's right, the Carnegie Library on the other side by the, by the county lot. And the county's been very generous in allowing, allowing people to park there when they're going. So there's, there's a lot of things going on now to purchase properties and to talk about tier parking and things like that that certainly aren't, you know...
Well, I just wanted to be reassured that all of the work, and we work very hard... Well, I just wanted to be reassured that all of the work, and we work very hard, and I, and again, speak as private citizen, not as any official, because I'm just the volunteer group, that we work very hard, and I don't wanna lose people, and I don't want to be funding programs that people can't come to because they have to pay the part.
One of the things that we, we did was just decree to make sure it happened, the price is twenty-five cents a half hour. And we did that to keep it as reasonable, obviously, so it's seventy-five cents for an hour and a half. But part of that is, is that what we found on Main Street, is there are more spaces available for people. And what maybe you'll see is that for that seventy-five cents, some of the people will always be able to get a space close to the library, where before, because what was happening before, employees that park on Main Street, they park in those prime spaces. So now you're not seeing that anymore.
Right, but you're seeing that the free spaces are getting more crowded. When I used to come down, oh, you know, it was very easy to find a spot and go in and work a few hours. Now I'm saying, what's going on? Why are they, why are all these cars here? Is there something going on? Well, it's people not wanting to pay on Main Street, so they're parking in the lots.
Right, and we have another program that's pretty unique, because everybody I talk to says you're crazy to do it. But we have, we have employee parking stickers, that if an employee wants to park in a meter eight hours a day for twenty days out of the month, it's gonna cost them, you know, a fairly decent amount of money. But our program is that employees, if you work at the library, or if you work at a restaurant, or, it'll cost you about five dollars a month to park in specific locations.
But where?
In the parking lots. If you're, for instance, if you're, if you wanna park, if you don't wanna walk a little bit, where you can park for free, and you wanna park closer, you can get an, you can pay for an employee sticker, and that'll allow you to park in certain areas of the parking lots.
You have to be an employee.
You have to be an employee.
Because I've seen employees say, I can't talk in, I gotta go move my car, it's two hours. And they're running in and out.
But, you know, those, those spaces that you talk about, those two-hour parking spaces, they're really for customers.
For turnover, yes.
For turnover. And, you know, I worked at Sweets' as a teenager, and you weren't allowed to park in the Lake Street parking lot if you worked for Sweets'.
Right.
You had to park at the Congregational Church, or the firehouse, whatever, and I worked at the gift corner at nights, and I would have to escort the women to their cars, because they just wouldn't allow parking. Now, I've gotten comments from, from business owners who say to me, you expect me to walk all the way to the Congregational Church to park?
Not that far.
I said, not that far, and plus, aren't, isn't there any close spaces for your customers? I mean, look at, like Lori Delmonte with the Colony Shop, we have that issue all the time, right Lori?
Mm-hmm.
About people taking spaces right behind her store for eight, twelve hours a day, and customers having to wait for a while.
Oh, I have no, no issue with the two-hour, because basically, when you're doing something, you're pretty well finished, if that works.
And there'll also be some spaces in the lots that have four-hour limits. So people can stay a little longer, like, for instance, we've got a request from, say, the Bridal Paradise, when they get a group of women who come in there to try on gowns, they can be there all day. So we wanna make sure that we, we can accommodate those people.
All right, well, I feel much better knowing that there still will be free parking areas that don't kill our programs and don't make me lose my volunteers.
Well, I think the other thing too is that if you see there to be a problem once, once it's in place, what are you easiest guys to talk to?
Well, you know if there's a problem, I'm gonna hold of you.
This is an example, last week, last week, the owner of Walens was here at the board meeting, and he's got a lot of in-out business, quick business, fifteen minute, and he came up here after the meeting, sat through the whole meeting, and then after the meeting, he came up to me and he said, I'd really like to have a fifteen-minute spot, what do I have to do? And I just said, trustee Keys, can you put a fifteen-minute spot there? And the guy was like, is that all I have to do? Yeah, that's all you have to do. So, as I said, this is a fluid project. So we're gonna look at it and see, get, get the advice from the business owners and residents, and say, maybe we need a little bit of this, maybe we need this, and it can be massaged and changed as we come along. It's not like, all right, we're putting the meters in, we're putting the signs up, that's it, it's done. No, we're gonna, we're gonna, like we've done on Main Street, and it's been successful.
All right, I'm happy to hear that, and I'm happy to hear your food, and if you're not, you'll see me again.
I know, I will.
That's a threat, not a promise.
Thank you.